Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the special meeting of the Wheatfield Town Board for this date, which is the 12th day of January 2015. We have only one item before us. As we finish, if any board members wish to add anything or bring anything else up, they may do so. But we have one item on the agenda for this evening, and that is hopefully to pass a final scoping document regarding the cobblestone development. Drew Riley is here again this evening, and Drew is going to take us through where we go this evening. So Drew, the floor is all yours.
Thank you very much, sir. As you know, over the last month, over a month, you've been dealing with scoping. It's an optional part of the procedure, but I always recommend it when you're doing an impact statement. The applicant will want to know what do you want studied and how you want to study. You have a public information meeting. My understanding at last meeting was last Monday.
Yep.
You've got some additional comments. I apologize if I got some of those comments late. I tried to incorporate those. You've got a copy in email to you with highlighted changes in there. And the gist of the highlighted changes were, we wanted some information clarified. We got some great photos from the residents that we can provide to the drainage consultants and your consultant to make sure they understand the situation and incorporate it. And also make sure that, I think one of the important things that was brought up is that when you have a meeting with the police department and there was a fire department in the school district, that you have a town board representative there so you hear from them exactly what their issues are, the applicant, and you understand what the issues are. And that's clearly understood in the Dr. Environmental Impact Statement. There were still questions raised about the animals that may exist on the site. We got some pictures. I have incorporated that in the environmental settings document. It would be something that the applicant will document. I know they have something on record already, condition why life could be good to document those situations on the record there. And one other issue was just some clarification of, as you know, one of the issues is the filling of the site, and we gave them some specific locations to run their cross section so you get an idea of how that filling and what it's going to look like from the rear yards of the existing residents back through the property. So I've incorporated some of those comments into the document, try to clarify some situations. The bottom line is we're asking you to adopt the scoping document. It is a, like I said, an informal but formal process that gives them direction. What do you use that scoping document for? When the Dr. Environmental Impact Statement is submitted to you, before you actually release it and continue with the process, you use that scoping document to say, did they study the things that you asked them to study the way you wanted them to study? As I put my hand out tonight, that's an important part of the process. If they don't do what you've asked them to do, then you reject that document. And you keep rejecting that document until they do what you've asked them to do. Once the document is accepted, then the scoping document becomes a move point, and you move forward with formal reviews, public hearings, hiring specialists to help you review that, make changes, and all those things are then finalized in your FEIS, which I always mentioned in my secret training. The difference between a DEIS and an FEIS, DEIS most of the times represents the applicant's opinion. The FEIS must represent your opinion. So you can do, you can have all of your opinions placed in that and your specialty review placed in that document. So that's the big difference. So tonight, I'm here to answer any questions that you have about that scoping document. We'd like them to move forward. I think the big question you have, let's get right to that question, is the typical process that I explained before is that the applicant does the DEIS, then you hire your experts and do your reviews and make revisions through that through the FEIS. One of the things you considered was, well, why do I want to see the same traffic study and the same drainage study I saw before, we haven't found them adequate? Why don't we go out and hire right from the beginning? And you put that at the end of your scoping document. The question that's been raised is, the secret law is very specific about, you can charge fees to review or complete an environmental impact statement. It says you can do both. So by doing both, the applicant is questioned, and you have to look at the unique situation. Can you do some of it and review some of it together? If you work with them enough, you may be able to do that, or you can just pull that out. The standard way is, like I said, standard doesn't mean always right, but the standard way is, you let the applicant do the DEIS, you're not going to get the same traffic study and the same drainage study because you've been very articulated, articulated in your, in your scoping document. If they submit the same traffic study and drainage study, I'm here to stand here to tell you, you would reject it because it doesn't meet the requirements of the scoping document. So we're hoping that they redo it, redo the drainage study and the traffic study too, what you've asked them to do, then you would hire your outside experts to take a look at those documents and say, after you've accepted that they did what you asked them to do, and redo, they can look at the model, redo the model, comment on the fact that you don't like how, they don't like how they did it, redo some of those things, and then that all can be addressed in the FEIS. But I always said that, and I got myself in trouble the first meeting, that typically how it's done, that the developer will do his job with it to try to prove why the project does not have environmental impact. You, though, have the upper hand in reviewing that document because you must agree with it then or make your own decisions in that FEIS. So that's the big question tonight. I think the applicant is asked. I think we've addressed the public issues and other people who have commented, but the applicant is actually remove that last statement in the, in the scoping document that they would like their chance to meet the requirement, do the entire DEIS, and then you go out and hire your consultant. Questions of the board first. You know, it's kind of a, I said to Bob, the secret law is a very, it lets you do things different ways, but when you create a law that allows people to do it different ways, what do you do? You create conflict, you create questions about it. If everybody does, does the same thing on all projects, on all secret stuff, then it would be easy, but because it's flexible, people do things different ways.
So if they do the study, and they do their study, and then we review it?
Right. Do they hire outside experts?
And if we do the review, and we come up with some discrepancies or things that we need further clarification on?
Right.
Does that mean they have to redo pieces of what they did? Or who?
Good question. In an FEIS, if there's something wrong in the DEIS, you can make that statement and make those corrections.
I'm not saying that it's wrong, but maybe they didn't answer it the way we were expecting the answer to come.
And I said that at the first meeting. Mr. Lucas Scott, I said, applicants will try with their consultants to make a project what they believe is environmentally sound. So you, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, you're going to get those, I reported the DEIS saying, we've done everything, we believe we've mitigated the maximum effect. That's where you sit, and in the FEIS is different. You get to make your statements on the record through your experts, through your reviews. No, we don't agree with it. This assumption was wrong. We plugged this in. This doesn't work this way. This has this impact. And you control what goes in the FEIS. And then you have that level of information. You have what the applicant presented, your information, and then, like I said, this whole thing is about making a decision at the end. With those two pieces of information, you make a rational decision in your finding at the end of the project. So I see it all the time. Something is submitted, and you make changes through your experts and whatever saying, we disagree. You can have the applicant make changes, like it was strictly a model thing, like a drainage report will say, hey, you made the wrong assumption here, put this assumption into the model. Or you can just have the model, and you make changes, or your consultant makes changes to it. This is the answer we got. We disagree with that answer. Okay? So I think you're protected either way. I think the applicant has offered, well, if you really want, we'd like to work out how you're going to do that. But the standard way is, let them produce the DEIS. They are not going to submit the same drainage and traffic study. We would clearly reject it if they did. And you can reject it as many a times as you want. If they're not listening, you just keep rejecting it, and the process doesn't go forward. But, you know, that's, I've seen that happen. But they have to do what's been asked, and then you hire your experts and make those changes to represent your, okay? If you have to not, that would be my recommendation, but you can do it either way.
Okay.
What happens if we reject it? Then you start with another scoping document, or what's the procedure?
No, you, you have to base upon that scoping document. You, when you reject it, the DEIS is incomplete. You have to list in your resolution, this is what you have not done correctly that we asked you to do, please redo it. It's not whether you agree or disagree with the findings of the DEIS. You're rejecting it because we asked you to do this type of traffic study, and you did not do that. And you specifically put that in your rejection. And we teach that to communities a lot, because a lot of times they just say, we reject the DEIS. The law says you must articulate what is deficient. You're saying that, that DEIS is deficient. You didn't, didn't do what we asked you to do. We asked for line of sight drawings. You didn't do that. You didn't submit any line of sight drawings. We asked you to study the parking situation in school and speak to the school. You didn't do that. You're rejecting it. It was deficient. The document did not meet the scoping document. So you don't have to redo the scoping document. You basically tell them deficient. Now, the other issue is, if something comes up in a DEIS that you did not think about because of the information that's garnered, doesn't mean you cannot address that issue in the FEIS. And that's the duck too, where something comes up in a draft impact statement that you didn't think about. Geez, this, this kind of got me thinking about it. I think this is a, this is a problem here. You can have that addressed in an FEIS. If it was a large enough problem, a real big mess, you can ask for what they call supplemental environmental impact statements. But typically, we can address it in the FEIS. See how complicated it gets? There are many different things that can happen through this process. It is a long process with a lot of steps to it. I handed out that, those fifteen kind of steps. But it's, it's a good process. It's a balanced process if you follow that process. And like I said, the hard part is when you get in, then you have to make a rational decision on the record based upon that information. Okay? Any other questions of the board?
Basically, if I understand you correctly, what you did with the scoping document is you took everybody's opinions and everybody's written ideas and everything that came to your attention from us, from the folks on the floor, or from the engineering yourselves, and put it all in there, and you want an answer to each one of those?
Right. As what we said, the DEIS has to address those issues. There were three issues at the end of the scoping document, which is kind of a good thing, and the scoping document says, were things brought up that you're not going to address in the DEIS? And I put three things at the end. There was one mention, one of the names, about doing a two-year wildlife study. We're not doing a two-year wildlife study. There was a mention about economic impacts, and unfortunately, my opinion, you can look it up, is you can't look at economic impacts. Okay? And then there was one other issue, like we had a?
Agriculture.
Agriculture, yeah. Very difficult thing, I pointed out to board, you have an agricultural protection plan being worked on, you're going to be changing lots of rules and laws, I'm sure, and doing other things in response to the agricultural protection plan. But as of right now, it'd be difficult to ask them to do an agricultural study because the plan is not in, it's not in a state act district, it's not agriculturally zoned land, and it's, and it's in accordance with the conference of plan of where you want to develop. If you're going to change that in the future, change in the future, that was my strong opinion. Very difficult to do an agricultural study when all your documents say that that's zoned correctly, your conference plan said that's where development is, and it's not your agricultural protection area. It's very difficult to just step back now and say, do an agricultural protect, do an agricultural analysis. What are they going to analyze? Because if you had something in your document saying, we want to protect that plan, agriculture is what they would. So those were the three things that I said, my, my opinion, and I presented to you the last month and a half. And I don't think those issues you could address in the DEIS.
They initially said that the site was balanced, that they weren't going to be bringing any more fill in, and so no fill in, no fill out.
Right.
But if they, so if they were the unbalanced site, essentially, the maybe lower the property, do we give them the leeway in this scoping document so that if they wanted to lower the height of their subdivision, they, they have that opportunity to do that?
We gave them a bunch of different ideas, ideas for mitigations and alternatives. We gave them a big open that you can change the layout, what, whatever, whatsoever the best. But under mitigations, we talked about changing grading and fill and how much fill you need.
Okay.
So that's one of the things we've asked them to look at, and I'm sure they would like to look at too. We've insisted that they look at the fill issue. We'd like to, and it's that balance, minimize as much of the fill as possible, but also meeting the requirements.
But being balanced wasn't a requirement of the town?
Right.
Okay.
Did you action test on the fill? We talked about this, so they're going to do soil analysis on, on the type of materials they're going to put in there. That was put in the scoping document, that they would give an idea of what the soils are.
But will it be action documentation?
Well, that'll be done if this project ever goes forward, they, they do that as a, as a norm.
They'll have to anyways, part of the floodplain changes, because in order to get a, a letter of map revision to remove the property from a floodplain, they're going to have the document adequate for that.
And I think that's one, it's a good, it's a good question, because the issue-
That's a compaction.
They'll have to hire somebody, either the state or somebody.
So that they're twenty-four, when they're on there?
Yeah.
All the time, or is it pot shot?
Well, they'll have to have, you have to work that out based on how much fill they ultimately end up with, and then it'll have to be sort of, that's the document for the FEMA guidelines that there's that for compaction.
And you were worried about, if they didn't scoping document, about, A, it was a different issue, but removing the topsoil from the site, we don't want that, obviously, we said that we want to keep it on site. The other issue with the type of soil, the gentleman brought up, is if they're really, really poor soil, where are they going to use them on site, and are they, can they be compacted properly? We're asking to analyze the soil. We haven't determined yet where are they bringing materials and what they're doing, but that's really an issue. Well, once they have those soils, that would be construction plans that, you know, that those are being compacted directly, are, you know, we want to know first, are there soils on site where you're getting that can be replaced with fill materials in these places? If we don't find out later, then we got to bring in thousands of truckloads of material from offsite because the material will compacture.
So some of that fill?
Hopefully, they look at that.
Some of that fill that they're going to be using will be from that pond they're digging?
Hopefully, yes. And are those soils suitable?
And depending on how deep they go, see if it's suitable, if it's clay.
Are those soils suitable for those types of filling operations? Those are good questions. Then other issues, when you get those results, other issues may come up, and that's where you can address them in the FEIS also. Never be afraid to say, that's the purpose of the DEIS, is generating information, things that you don't know now, that you might know to the DEIS, and say, hey, this raises another concern or a problem that we, we did not see before. These all sudden soils are on poor, now you have an issue of having to bring in lots of material to the site, which is a very different issue than taking material buckets.
And going through all the emails and all my notes from the meetings, there was one thing that Doug Sigmund mentioned about hedge rolls or something.
Right.
Wasn't there a hedge roll that you were concerned about?
There's a tree line that, I own a half of, and I just want to make sure it's in there because, you know, once the bulldozer's through, it's done.
Yep.
And that tree line has blocked some.
We've asked them to identify all those existing tree lines, and then one of the mitigations is to avoid what you've asked for, and we're going to tell them, they have to show them their plans, that they're avoiding those, those tree lines and keeping them in place.
In previous meetings, they already agreed to that?
Right.
I just don't know if, because this is happening, if it's going to change.
And that's a very good thing. What comes out of an FEIS a lot of times too, if the project can succeed, one of the things in that finding statement is all those conditions you're going to place on the approval of the site, which would go to the conditions of, you know, preserving that tree line, doing extra compaction tests or whatever. Could be reasonable findings within your finding document, which that is used to make your decisions on the project. So that's the great thing about when an EIS is used correctly, is it's a process, you know, that generates information to make rational decisions.
Okay.
And thank you for those points. Those were good points. Do you have anyone? Figure out a question.
I got one question on the-
Mr. Parkill?
On the drainage, on the, it says downstream, but it was brought up about upstream, where the impact wasn't upstream, and it's not written in, written into the scope. You have a, you only have a word downstream.
There's a few slots, I'm just checking this here. We want them to analyze the whole water shed, which would include the upstream areas. We targeted downstream because we typically know that's the problem, but they do have to identify the drainage sheds and what's upstream of it. And if that creates a problem, we're an alternative, but we want them to look at the whole drainage shed, which includes upstream, upstream and downstream.
Well, the truth is, if the town starts cleaning ditches upstream last Sunday when I went down Speed Road, everybody threw his water, they're putting it back in their houses, fifty feet off the back of their house, if that ditch was open properly, that all, that water would all flow there.
Well, that's probably when you do ditching problems, is you don't start at the upper end, you start at the lower end, because if you clean up, you need to have a-
Because right now, it's all re-stream, but if the town does what you can see, they're going to do open ditches, you know, there's a lot of water sitting there.
It does state in the area and downstream on the first page, so I would say that was, that's addressed.
The waters that we're asking for. I'm going to hold that. I want to be patient with the applicants. Other issues. So the ask tonight is, is for you, is to issue a very brief resolution, making acceptance of that scoping document, any revisions. You can always figure a resolution, make amendments to that. There's one amendment that's been asked for by the applicant, we knew that was, that last two sentences of the document, asking for the work to be split from the DEIS. That's what they've asked for. The applicant, here, if you have any questions or want to work me on that particular issue. Other than that, we had a couple other questions on-
Mark?
Yeah, I'm just, I spoke to the chairman of the last meeting, and the town got brushed off, and there's been a desire to be thrown water pollution. We just did nothing in there about that. The town is a town to brush that off, but if you do your research on stormwater pollution, it's a huge factor, maybe higher risk, no too high. I'm just, I, I'm not sure why the town board is not finding anything in regards to that. If the county did have a full SWIP come, why do you not looking into that and including that?
Now, I could clarify that, but it's a requirement in the state law. I mean, any drainage group, any, as you, as you point out, SWIP, you have to meet quality and quantity, so they have, they have to address that issue.
Yeah.
And they may address it differently. Matter of fact, we've asked them to look at alternatives. It could be great, and you know, you can have bio-retention swales and all those different things to take care of the quality.
Sure. According to the plan, I looked at it early, they did not cover stormwater pollution.
And let's talk about, that's a very good point I made earlier at previous meetings. Take the plans that exist now and set them aside, because the DEIS is going to create the plan that hopefully is environment, minimally impacts the environment. Hopefully, it will. If the process is done correctly, the plan will change, it may be done better.
If it's included, but right now, it's not included.
I always tell people, if you're doing an impact statement and don't think the result is going to be a change of project or a better project, that's typically why you issue positive deck, because the project proposed has potentially an impact on the environment. There will be changes to that project.
If it's included, but right now, it's not included.
Drew, what?
I can clarify that. It's included by state law, but it's toward what?
Yeah.
I can just clarify that they're, that it will address.
It's in federal law.
Yes, no, it's, it's good.
Anything over an acre, Tim, right? You, you have to submit a storm plant.
They have, they have.
They, anything over an acre, which will be.
There's, there's no option. They have to.
Yeah, they have.
The law should have already been done.
There's nothing been disturbed there, to my knowledge, other than maybe that little ditch that was filled in that-
Yeah, because the law states application process, the application is very involved.
Right. They, they have to, and again, I don't want to, before they issue a preliminary plat approval, you have to have those things in place. There's been no preliminary plat approval on the project. There's been no, to the point of that. They may have done preliminary SWIP applications, but obviously, until you know your approvals, you can't apply to a SWIP. So just a clarification, they missed that there, there hasn't been any approval on the project. Otherwise, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight.
Our specs now, Tim, we require the hydrodynamic units, if that's the right word for it.
That's, that's a piece of it. So the, the hydrodynamic units are for pre-treatment in front of a wet pond, so there's all different, the, the stormwater regulations that are being referred to have all different prescribed methods for meeting the water quality treatment requirements. Wet ponds are one way to meet the water quality requirement. Prior to a wet pond, you either need a floor bay. It's like the initial treatment for all the sediment, where you need a hydrodynamic unit. The town has gone to requiring hydrodynamic units. They're more expensive for the developers, but they're easier for the town to maintain because the, the floor bays tend to silt in. We had issues, and then, you know, you get older. So we require hydrodynamic units. Now, that's to protect the water going into the wet pond, and that's how the water quality is treated. But there's also, Drew was referring to bio-retention. Over the last few years, the regs have changed to where, in addition to treating quantity from a peak standpoint and quality that's being talked about with the SWIP, you also now have to retain the water so that your volume under a certain storm is not increasing. So you have to disconnect, you know, we've talked about this with all the suburbia, you have to disconnect the rooftops. Instead of them going into the under drains, they're supposed to spill out on the yards, if you can do that. Now, in the town, there's only certain times when we can do that, you know, because of the soils, they have to be able to go right to a ditch or something, or it can create issues. Or bio-retention, as Drew talked about, rain gardens, things like that, where you're promoting the water to infiltrate into the ground as opposed to running up.
As a clarification, the gentleman's brought the way, I'll just add, if you want in your resolution, a clarification, the drainage report will include analysis of quality. So just make sure, I mean, we know what's going to happen, but just make sure that it's in there. I, I don't have a problem with that, it's just clarifying. I love clarifying things, because the applicant will always come back and say, can you clarify this? What are you asking for? I might as well clarify right here that the drainage report is addressing quantity, all these things we're asking for, but also addressing quality. And as we say in the mitigation section, he's going to look at green infrastructure things to also improve quality. So.
On, on drainage, the front page of the Tribune had a nice picture of Eric Roden, the flooding. It was in the winter conditions. I just want to, is the drainage report going to not just look at, you know, a rain occurrence in the middle of July, but is it going to look at something in January or February where the ground's frozen? You have a major snow melt, and there's nowhere for the water to go in the ground because the ground's frozen, so it's going to go into all the ditches and the streets?
We've asked for, here, I clarified, I use old, old engineering language, I call pre-wetting conditions. So I've asked to look at pre-wetting conditions.
Oh, is that, that's what that is?
Yeah, that, that happens when the ground is already soaked, or the ground is nowhere for water to go, what's happening on that property?
Pre-wetted.
Which you have that situation, a lot of the property is already flooded. You're also looking at the idea of removing that, that area that's going to be filled, and they're looking at that also.
Yeah.
Pre-wetted, frozen, they don't usually do frozen, they just pre-wetted means there's no more water going to be going in the ground anyway.
Okay.
Frozen is a difficult issue. My backyard was fully flooded when it was frozen, and I never floods.
I just didn't understand, I didn't understand pre-
Well, it was flooded like theirs, it was-
Yeah, the terminology I wasn't used to. I didn't know that pre-wetted meant that the ground wasn't, had any more capacity to hold.
Right.
And isn't this study dependent upon a hundred-year flood, not a ten-year flood?
We've asked them to specifically look at the, the hundred-year storm event, which they have to anyway, but we're asking specifically, look at it, what are the implications when a hundred-year storm comes along? And I believe, I think Tim pointed out, that the hundred-year storm event has changed, and they have to make sure they get the updated number, and I believe that number has changed since the original drainage study, because they have bigger numbers now, obviously, you know, the weather is, they need to check on that, and they'll check on that, and sure they're using the most recent hundred-year storm event.
Does anybody else have anything that they think we are missing at this point? Mr. Palumbo?
Supervisor, again, Jeff Palumbo from Damon Mori. Just a couple of things. Um, first of all, a couple of times in the document, there's a sentence that says, include in the analysis, the impacts of an existing approved subdivision, any existing approved subdivision with future phases and subdivisions in the planning process. I think if you take that sentence literally, then we'd only be examining approved subdivisions with future phases. I don't know that that's what you want. I think you really want us to do any approved subdivision, whether or not it has future phases. I think a literal reading could limit that from your perspective.
Uh, where is, where is it?
It's, um, number five under three point O, and it's also in number eight.
Yeah, maybe a clarification, including the analysis, the impact of any existing approved subdivision with future phases, comma, and subdivisions in the planning process before the town. Can that help out with the comment there?
Well.
Saying those subdivisions that, that already been approved, that have future phases, obviously that impact this, and then any subdivisions in the planning process right now, like they have been approved, but they're before.
No, no, the, the, the way to, the, the way to clarify it is to change, uh, the word with to including.
Yeah. Approved subdivisions would do it. I'm just pointing that out, that you don't want to limit yourselves on that issue. But I do have an objection to the second half of that sentence. Subdivisions in the planning process. Typically, we would not study subdivisions that have not been approved for a variety of reasons. And we, that would require us to determine whether they're in the sketch plan stage, the preliminary plat, the final plat, where are they? And we don't know if that'll ever take place. So typically, we would only study those subdivisions that have been approved by the town, but not those that are in the planning process. Um, so I'd ask you to consider that. And the other comment, Drew has pointed out, the, uh, final note on the document itself, um, as Drew correctly pointed out, the, the project sponsor has the choice on whether or not the lead agent prepares the DEIS or the project sponsor himself. If the project sponsor had chosen the town to prepare the lead, the, um, DEIS, then you could properly charge us for these things that you're talking about, potentially. But since we chose to do it ourselves, we're preparing the DEIS, it becomes our document. And the board loses the authority to direct to us what consultants to use, because then it wouldn't be our document, it would be your document. But we chose to prepare the document. So in terms of what Drew said earlier, I agree with. Um, the way it should work is we will prepare the DEIS, we will update the traffic study and the drainage studies and all the other studies that you've asked us to conduct, we'll submit it to you, you would send it to whatever independent consultant you'd like to, to, uh, analyze and review, and you can properly charge us a fee under seeker for that review. But not direct us which consultants to use and then direct us to pay for those. So we'd ask that that note be eliminated. Thank you.
Do you have a question on that point, Tim?
Pardon me?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, sure, certainly.
Is it your intention to use the same persons or groups that you had previously?
I think so. I think we'll probably use the same ones and, um, and because we're confident that their studies were accurate and they'll be updated to reflect the information that's been requested.
Isn't that sort of counterproductive, expecting a different result from the same group during your review?
Well, there, there's never been an identification that anything was incorrect about what those studies showed. There's no, no identification. What's the basis for making the claim that the studies were done incorrectly? There is none. In fact, just the opposite exists. Your own town engineer accepted those studies and recommended that the board issue a negative declaration.
Doesn't the town board just kind of more or less take a look at and say, the way you did it was right?
I'm not following. What, what the?
Do they review what you have put down?
What?
Do they review every little piece of information you have? Or do they take a look at what you arrived at and said, yeah, it's, uh, the way they went about it to arrive at this conclusion?
There's, there's several different answers to that question. The first part of the answer is that when we submit the draft DEIS, it's the lead agent, your responsibility, determine whether or not the document is complete. Again, not necessarily that you agree with the conclusions of our report, just that we've addressed all the issues that you've asked us to address. The second part of the question is, then you then take that, I don't expect the town board to do an analysis of the drainage, I would expect that you would bring it to a consultant and have him review, have them review our documents, both in terms of the drainage and the traffic, and then have them take a look at the minutia in the document that most of us don't even understand and, and provide guidance to the board. And for that, you can charge us.
And if we need further analysis or further detail, we can come back and.
Absolutely. A- absolutely. Absolutely.
I think that's where you're protected, because the, the study is going to be different. I mean, the parent study was done before, you identified, and the public has identified that this is not a standard situation. You asked for a lot of different stuff to be done. Um, they're going to present all that new information? Yeah, and they come back the same and say, we don't think, they don't think it's an impact, they're fairly confident that. But then you're going to hire your independent consultant to look at that and, and go through that and, and analyze it even further. So you're protected in all ways. I think you're, you're fine with that. Like I said, you're not going to get the same drainage study, you're not going to get the same traffic study you got before. If they just repackage the same study, I'll tell you right now, it's going to be rejected because it doesn't.
And, and, and we know that's not going to happen, because we know it would be rejected. Thank you. Any other questions for me?
The max that we can charge is based upon the value of the land plus the value of the infrastructure that's put onto the land.
Correct.
How do we get, how do we get those numbers?
As soon as you request it from us, we'll provide it.
Did we come up with an answer for point number five, subdivisions in the planning process?
Yeah, we're going to, to change the word with to including. And I think there's somewhere, there's a, it's the same thing on another part of the document, but I don't.
Number eight on the same page is the same thing.
With, but the subdivisions in the planning process?
Right.
We maybe want to just do subdivisions that have, uh, had their, uh, I forget what, preliminary site plan approved, that's final, but, yeah.
So the one you typically include, and I would say for number eight, in a traffic study, you do projections, growth rate projections, but a good traffic consultant will look at and say, well, there's two subdivisions in the planning process. They're not approved already, that'll give me an idea what the growth rate is in that area. So it is kind of irrelevant in the traffic. That's how a good traffic consultant figures out growth rates, is they look at the area, and if there's two, three subdivisions in the planning process, it gives you an idea for growth rate, so you can say, this is what, what the traffic would be in that area. So it, it, it'll be used anyway, number eight. Number five, a little harder, the drainage report or something, just schematic before planning work. You may as well look at it and then say that most of these subdivisions will have no impact on this subdivision, from a drainage standpoint. There's a subdivision right next to this, I would say, geez, you know, even if it was in the early planning processes, you probably should look at it. It's your job to look at those things that they were involved with. We're saying, look at those, those subdivisions that are on the books, especially future phases and anything that's in the planning process, I would say, for the transportation, give you an idea of growth rate.
There is a subdevelopment that has several phases, uh, let's see, a hundred and sixty one houses left to go in it, uh, within a half a mile of this subdevelopment.
That definitely would be included. It goes to the growth, it goes to, in a traffic study.
Traffic study.
I mean, you definitely want to know that these are the projections, that that traffic is not going to remain the same. With those existing subdivisions, you know it's going to grow.
I mean, on the drainage phase.
The drainage you have to take a look at, we've asked them to look at the watershed, so I think it's relevant to kind of look at definitely that project that has already approved projects. I want to see how they're handling drainage and how it's affecting, affecting this project. So that's why I stated in that one. So the wording was bothering me, I think all you're worried about is some future project. I don't think you have many subdivisions before the planning work.
That's what I was thinking.
You're worried about those ones that are already been approved.
Right.
Phases. And that they'll definitely have to look at.
There really isn't much that would affect that area.
With the worry, the way it is now.
You do have Parkside, the final phase on Parkside, that could have some effect on water. Um, other than that, you're up to Brookhaven and maybe Whistling Straits. Both of those go through Burkholz Creek, they don't come across, so that, that wouldn't have much effect. So there really isn't much in that area.
David?
Pardon?
David Holmes projecting something between Mark and Eric?
I don't think anything's on the books. He's talked, he's talked about that several times. He wants to, he wants to change the direction of the creek.
That's my whole point.
And I know there's a projection.
That's my whole point about the planning process. What does it mean?
There's nothing before us that I'm aware of in that area.
It was something close.
Mark Shaw is the big one, obviously.
He's safer with sticking with approved subdivisions.
Okay, so we're going to change the language in number five for the subdivision. Number six, you can change the language a little bit, but I would kind of leave those planning process ones so the guy can get an idea for growth rate. That's all he's doing is growth rate.
You mean number eight?
Number eight.
Six.
If you want to change the wording on that, just to make sure it's properly said to them, even if it's in the planning process, for growth rate, it'll give you an idea of what the growth rate. I mean, if I'm doing growth rate in a traffic study, I'm looking at an area and saying, okay, what's planned in these areas where they're baking parcels, to get an idea whether the growth rate is a half percent or one percent or two percent, it's going to tell me what the traffic is.
But tonight, we have to pass, unless we have another special meeting coming up, we have to pass a document. We need to know what that wording is before we pass it.
Bob has the wording for number five, and we'll use including future phases, okay? And for number eight, number eight, uh, in fact, for any existing approved subdivision, including future phases, comma, and subdivisions in the planning process to estimate growth rate.
Okay. And then also, what are we doing about that, uh, last wording, John?
Well, did we take out subdivisions in the planning process in number five?
In number five, yep.
Okay.
If you want me to go through some motions on amendments, maybe?
Let me ask a question then, subdivisions, is, is Mark Shaw Estates, even though they haven't built it out, is that an approved subdivision, or is that in the planning stage?
Well, it depends.
Oh, it's approved.
I know it depends. That's why I want to know what side of the fence it's on.
It depends, it, it was approved at one point, but they have to redesign it because they're, when it was approved, there weren't, the wetlands weren't.
Yeah. In my mind, they need to know about Mark Shaw Estates, but I, I, it's not.
Taken into consideration.
I would, I would think you'd want to include subdivisions that.
You want to specifically name the subdivision, well, let's name it. But, I, I, but they need to know that that's.
I would think you'd want to include subdivisions, I'm trying to think of how you'd word it, subdivisions that have been, um.
Well, Drew has it that subdivisions in the planning process before the town, and it's, that's certainly.
I mean, if, if that's in the planning process, it means it's either been talked about, or an application submitted, or talked about in the plat. I'm not sure why we wouldn't.
Mr. Palumbo, it does say before the town, so it wouldn't include things that are pie in the sky.
And if it's, if it hasn't come up, then it's not in the planning process.
But what is the planning process? What's the planning process? If somebody came in and submitted a sketch plan, or whatever your first phase of subdivision review is? And it's so speculative, how can you possibly analyze that? You don't know if it's going to get approved?
I don't know, it's speculative. You can go on the county site, I mean, and the, 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 the street plan and everything, I think is already proposed. You can look at street maps and the, the, the street layout for that Mark Shaw Estates.
Yeah, no, I have no problem with the approved ones. I'm talking about those that have not been final approved. I've been do-
But it hasn't been final approved yet. They still have to go through some.
And see, that's the problem. But, and, and we have never, we have never examined subdivisions that are in so-called planning process, never. It's always been approved subdivisions. Because otherwise, it's a guess, whether somebody's actually going to do it.
Why don't we put Mark Shaw Estates in all its phases and, and whatever else you want to add, but you'd be, you need to put, I think you need to name that one.
We all agree with that one.
I'd be comfortable if you just name it in whatever other language you want to put in there, but you got to name.
I, I'm comfortable with on number five, just the simple wording, now, in fact, the many existing approved subdivisions, including future phases, period. There's, there, there's, there's nothing in there that's going to affect, future plans can affect drainage and that, they all have to be independently designed. But on number eight, I, you know, that's how I've seen it done for 20 years, is that if you want the growth number, you have to look at all, even stuff in the planning process to give you an idea of growth rate. Otherwise, how are you guessing a growth rate? DOT will give you a growth rate for the state highway at whatever percent.
Yep.
But you may know that there's already all these projects that are all being talked about in the area, it'll give you an idea, and they come to your growth rate.
I won't object to that language in number eight. I don't object to that in number eight.
But that's, that's done for traffic.
So, so we had to estimate for growth rate?
But that's for estimate for growth.
Right. That's fine.
That's what the residents are concerned, that all this traffic is going to build up over the years, and you're not examining.
Okay, we still have to deal.
First of all, the drainage, you're looking at those future phase projects.
We still have to deal with the question of the, uh, independent engineer or consultant or not. Does anybody have any opinions on that issue?
I, I think Drew is recommending at this point that, that that language be removed. I, I would concur with that recommendation for a couple of reasons.
Are we simply killing this last note on the last page?
I, I agree with what Drew.
You're still going to hire your independent consultant, they're just going to activate from this DEIS. They're going to, you know, give you some time to go out, get RFPs, the one number cost, and get R from consultants to say, this is what we want done, and get somebody on board.
Okay.
And that'll be a lot of work when that happens, and sitting down with you, explaining, going over, you had a lot of great questions the public do, do about drainage, and make sure that you understand the drainage impact, it's a very complicated issue. Traffic is going to be, has some specific problems today.
And we would encourage your consultants that you use to contact our consultants and ask whatever questions they might have, any clarifications they might have.
Okay, is there anything else to add to this discussion before we entertain a motion?
We were going to add just one, one line about the stormwater, um.
About quality.
Quality, stormwater quality.
Yeah, the, the drainage report will include an examination of quality.
And where's, where's that going, Drew?
I will put that in, in, in number four. Uh, considering pre-wetting conditions and address quality issues. Stormwater quality issues.
And address how stormwater quality will be treated. Put parentheses, how treated.
Okay, where are you?
Number four. So you have expanded.
We got all number four?
Yeah. Providing an analysis on the retention basis, preliminary downstream, to measure your hundred year storm event, that in addition, the analysis should be done considering pre-wetting conditions and address, I don't know, do it separately. Drainage, the drainage report should also address stormwater quality issues and how they are treated. And the mitigations already have them looking at potentially green drainage.
You're adding another sentence.
Yeah, I'm adding that for sex, I don't want to make it sound like it's a stormwater drainage, drainage report will address quality issues.
Yes, sir. Mr. Davis?
I just still have a great concern about this, uh, retention league, retention pond or what you want to call it. Uh, normally they're in a valley, but they're going to be like level, or if not, built out the ground, um, and the houses north of, of, of Leimke, uh, Drive there are actually lower than the pond normally. It's okay, the new homes are going to be up in the air, but where that pond's going to go, it's going to be level, as, as they say, it's not higher than the houses north, you know, just on the north side of the street from me. My low plot, as soon as that thing floods, there's nowhere for the water to go. These homes, there's about six or seven homes that are going to get completely washed out. And also, if they're saying now that they, they may not take all the rooftop water and send it to that, to there, and they just leave it on the ground, the people on the corner of Eric, Eric Road and Leimke, they're going to get it, the school's going to get it. It's all going to come downhill to our, our guys, you know that Sawyer Creek doesn't go anywhere. So this big pond you're going to put in, you know, that thing is full already, like Doug said, the standing water in that field right now is there now. If you dig that pond, it's going to be immediately full. You've got to have a full pond starved. And then all this stuff is going to come, you open all these ditches, I mean, the, the ditch on, uh, Leimke Drive is not that big, a, a creek, if you want to call it a creek, it's not that wide. I mean, they could double dose that thing and widen it up and push it right through, maybe it might help. But my scare is, the people on Leimke, they, in their 50 years, you put this pond in and it overflows, there's going to be, what, a hell of a mess. I mean, we just saw it the other Sunday, when it freezes like this, say the, uh, the overflow, uh, in, in that pond freezes, next thing we have a big rain, we have a thaw, that ice still stays underneath, it doesn't thaw. Next thing, the water's coming over the top. We don't get the water much faster than we get it now. Right now, that field slows the water down for us guys. But that hundred year storm in July, coming out of, uh, out of Sandborn, I, I was coming down that way, the water was flooding across, uh, Ward Road up by the, uh, the ambulance area. I got home to my house, the creek was still down. Eight hours later, that creek was the highest I've ever seen it. It was two, a foot above, I had to get all my, uh, equipment out of my shed before, before the water got in. Never come that high before. Just something like that, and those houses are just going to be in their places. About four houses or five houses sitting there, they're going to get it, and the, and the people on, uh, Eric Road and Leimke are going to get it. I mean, it's okay, saying, doing this, like, study, but like, uh, Mr. Howard was saying there, freezing and all this stuff that goes on, the funny weather that we have here, we keep seeing big storms. You know, we have a ton of rain on a warm day, and coming around, it's still frozen. There's water everywhere. And you're going to pile all this, you know, double the population. You know, double the population by putting these homes in there, from Eric, uh, Leimke, Leimke Drive, all of Egg, about forty-six houses, you're going to put another forty-four right there. Double that, double that right away. All the, the runoffs from the blacktop, the driveways, everything, it's just going to run off so fast. They're going to get hit everywhere. They're going to have water everywhere.
And I think the theory-
Sitting right there. You have to measure the safety of the school, all the school kids, all of a sudden, now you've got, got floodwater in there. And it can happen just like that.
You can see Tim taking a look at it right now. Now, the theory here is that's designed to hold a hundred-year flood, right? Tim?
Well, the example, if you want, again, I went down to Steed Road. Now, that wasn't a major melt last Sunday. That pond already had overflowed, and it was solid water running into the ditch in front on Steed Road, from past, by the pavilion, all the way to the baseball field, two hundred yards, that, that was overflowed. That pond, any pond you put in will only hold a foot of water. I don't know how your calculations go. I'm telling you the truth. You've got a foot of water, the water retention in that property is going to take that pond and fill it right up.
What's on about Leimke?
When they dig it in the summer, you can walk over there, and I, I'll, I'll show you. You know, you know yourself. So pond on Steed Road's a prime example, and we should look at that. And what's going to happen? I don't know how they calculate the pond.
Well, I think this-
Hopefully, by ten feet deep, because it's always going to be full. It's going to be like a teapot, it's seven, eight full all the time.
And I know that this has more rise than one foot, but I don't know what it is.
Yeah, there, there will be a normal water elevation in the pond that will be equal to the outlet. So the outlet has to discharge to the ditch. That outlet is going to be above your normal ditch water elevation. And that outlet comes back to the pond. Wherever that outlet pipe ends at the pond is where the pond will always be full of water.
So it's like Oppenheimer?
Yes.
Okay, you know, this is a prime example, thank you.
The story, the, the story is, the story is above, you know, the story is above that point.
I, I understand. But again, if you went by Oppenheimer's heart, any time there's water, you understand what it is I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter.
Let's, let's, let's get to the point. The town board agreed with your statement. They've done what they have to do, which is positive deck. Unfortunately, they have to do four studies. That's what you have to do. You can't just say no, and that's the laws of the city.
Well, I agree with you.
So we have, we, the town board agreed with your comment, and said, we want this study more. Hey, see, this is, we present the problems here, and they've asked us to be studying more. We take it in the fact, we pointed out the fact that the pro, and thank you for providing the, the pictures, we can quantify it, they can quantify it. This site already accesses a pond, so they have to add on top of that pond because it already accesses a detention basin, as you very clearly said. So they have to study that. Hopefully, they will study it correctly. They will provide that information. The town has already gone on record. They're going to hire an independent person to come in there and review that. I'm sure you guys are going to look at it and say, are there flaws to this? I mean, I, I'm always concerned about emergency overflow. When I, when you get the bigger storm and whatever, that has to, has to overflow. You know it's going to overflow at certain point. What's going to happen when it emergency overflows? What's going to happen to the surrounding property?
Well, it's truly an independent study, and that just a review. Come on, guys, you know the way it goes. An independent review and an independent study is two different words.
It's pretty obvious.
And that's why they were like, an independent review, okay? You guys know that. Come on, you're the guys.
Right, so, again, I just want to break, we could argue here all night about drainage and-
Well, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying-
We know, the town board has agreed, this will have an impact from a drainage standpoint. We've expanded the drainage study, they're going to hire independent people to look at it, we've asked for a bunch of different alternatives. We've asked for even more alternatives to change the location of the pond, and you do different things on that property. So we've asked for the look at that. Um, and so-
There's just nowhere for the water to go, is what they're trying to say.
We're going to study it.
What's down, what's down?
We're going to study it.
Let us study it.
It's just, it's just-
But it's already been approved.
Should I add any motion to the tier amendments?
We're, we're going to provide, and then it'll be hard when you get the draft impact statement and studying it, and make sure that those comments are addressed. You'll be able to, still, if you see that study and still have those comments, you, those comments go on record. They have to be addressed in the FBI app, and we will address them through an independent consultant, make sure that those issues are addressed. We all may not like the answers. We all for a time don't like the answer, the public, some, some answer's going to occur at the end of this, so, um-
Do you want me to try to put together the motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion with your changes.
So, so I think it would be a mo, a motion to approve the fourth draft of the final scope for the draft environmental impact statement, uh, for the Cobblestone Creek subdivision as amended, and I guess I'm going to try to say as follows. Paragraph three point oh four, to include that the report should also include, uh, study on the impact on the quantity and quality of water. Paragraph three point oh five, change the word with to including, and end the sentence at the word phases. Uh, three point oh eight, change the word, uh, with to including in the second line from the bottom, uh, and add at the end, uh, to estimate growth rates. Uh, to, to estimate growth rates of subdivisions in the planning process. Uh, and then I think also to, um, remove the final paragraph of the draft scope, beginning with the, uh, the word note.
Remove it out, right?
Remove it.
With those changes, I'll make a motion that we accept the final scoping project.
Does anybody wish to second?
I'll second it.
Second by art. Moved and seconded. Anything on the question? Does anybody have anything further they want to bring up?
What's the timetable on this roughly, Drew, then?
What's the applicant?
What's the, what's the tip of the timetable?
I don't know. I can't speak for the applicant. It could be six months, it could be two months, it could be three months.
So we're, we're basically in a holding pattern until they come back?
Delayed, and then addressed, and back to the opening.
So should we start preparing ourselves?
Yeah, I would start looking for your consultant and whatever you have.
Anything else, gentlemen? Okay, then if not, then, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have our scoping document.